And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item on the agenda is to approve two recent planning commission meetings. Commissioners had a chance to review those. Is there any comments or changes? If not, would entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes from May 1st and June 5th.
Got a motion? We'd have a second?
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the second item is going to be a preliminary plat. This is not a public hearing on this particular item. Brandon, looks like you're gonna review this with us?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Um, this one should look familiar. We do have the applicant, Mike Markery, with us tonight. He's got a lot of cool and interesting stuff to share with you. So last meeting, we did have this come before you for a recommendation for approval. The city council has not looked at it yet. The applicant has made a few minor tweaks to the project. We cross our fingers that it loads, I think. The main change is just a minor one. Looking at going from 166 units to 170 units. But with that request, the applicant has, oh. Has provided what a lot of amenities. So what they looked at was how do they best utilize the space that they have? As far as the open space, the amenities to the residence. So I won't steal any of the thunder. We'll let Mike with Salisbury Homes kind of share.
It will be getting out.
No, I don't. We have a video to watch, so that'll be entertaining to see if it cuts out over 15 seconds. So, so, sorry. I'll pretend not to be excited. You may, do you want to try just setting it? Can we restart it?
It's this.
How come your microphone's on? Speakers? All I hear is these voices on here, speaker.
We broke down?
So what we'll do while that's...
Yeah, is there some verbal stuff maybe Mike can share with us?
Just kind of share. And then once we have the computer working, we'll go ahead and share the video that Salisbury's put together. To kind of give us a better idea of what the project will look like.
Commissioners, thanks again for having us. As Brandon mentioned, we were here just two weeks ago.
Yeah.
We were at a 166 units in the project, which was almost a mistake from our end. We left the building out. So feedback from DRC that same day, they had wanted us to move the entrance to the project back where the existing entrance out in the field is. And we had shown that. But this gave us an opportunity to go back and actually get it through staff, let the engineering staff look at it. The biggest changes that we've made are comments that we've received in regards to pedestrian traffic, how they're going to cross the project, how we can calm the traffic that's moving within the project. And we did look at the fact that we came in and got approval for 166, now we're 170. And we really haven't done a great job of kind of showcasing the amenities that were on site. So if they can get their system working, we went back and put together a rendering that was a flyover that let us go through the project. But the biggest change is just verbally while we're waiting is we added an amenity to the project, which is a dog park. We had a corner of the project that we never really liked. It was, just felt like it was a burrow. It was just going to be a hole. So we added a dog park down the southeast corner. We're getting a lot of feedback. People really like those. We thought that was a beneficial use of the space. Beyond that, we listened to staff and added above and beyond the approved landscaping. Everything that we had done with the landscaping plan was to city standard. We added 60 or 70 odd trees around the eastern and southern extents of the property to create a barrier between that railroad corridor that goes through there and the future commercial of the on the southern side of the property. Also, we got some pretty strong feedback that calming that traffic and giving pedestrians an area where they could cross, because we have that centralized linear park space. We project that everyone that's on the perimeter, their kids are going to want to cross to get into there. So we designed the project primarily because we've got a project that has currently lots of little cluster parks. And what we noticed is they feel like by the time you get the building standing next to them and the parking next to them, that they're, maybe in a canyon is the wrong word, but they're, they're not very open or pleasing. Could get used, but you know, they're 30 feet from the side of a building and things of that nature. So we really wanted this linear open space that everybody could use as a benefit to the entire project. The last thing we did is when we were here last time, we discussed that on these interior units, oh, perfect. On these interior units, we put these courtyards in the backs of each unit so that we could control fencing. People would have an area where they could keep their barbecue. They could do some landscaping, a small garden. And once we did this rendering, we realized that the properties on the outer extent, there was enough room to add them. So we added 60 or 80 more of these little courtyards, just because we think that'll be a real benefit to the residents. So we put this together, this finished rendering this morning. Your very sharp staff pointed out, there are a couple of small fences shown in the wrong spot. But at least this gives us a better visual of the entire project. A couple of things I didn't point out. We have entry monuments at both entries, entrances off Slant Road and the Parkway, which I think will be nice. And we did upgraded fencing along the Parkway and Slant Road. That will hopefully make it so that you're not driving down that road looking over a six-foot fence. It won't feel like you're in a, you know, in a valley or make the residents feel like they're in prison. So we're excited about that. Will that play? So this is the entrance coming in off of Slant Road. And this is primarily, nothing has extensively changed in that area since we looked at it two weeks ago.
Okay.
The traffic calming, we got feedback this morning to kind of move them around just a little bit. But the traffic calming is your city has approved, you know, the bulb outs. And we'll do a pedestrian crossing with signage, just so that we have clear areas where we have given people the opportunity to cross. This is the linear park that's going down in between the buildings. There's three playgrounds in there. There's a basketball court in there. That's the same as what we looked at a couple of weeks ago. You can see those courtyards in the backyard. They'll be like a half masonry with wrought iron on top of them. Again, so they're defined space, but they're not closed off. That's what we're seeing down in Parkview. People are putting six-foot tall line of fences up and kind of blocks off. So I thought our guys did a really good job. All of the landscaping needs, the city standards, but the trees we were talking about as we added everything, those railroad tracks run right here. So we added all these trees along this eastern extent, and then when we get down there at the southern portion, that wasn't part of the plan last week, two weeks ago.
Well, those courtyards, will they be kind of ruled so you don't really want those fences to go up later on? Will it be like some HOA rules or something?
And that's what we run into in Parkview is they have that limited common space. So the terms of that, HOA controls the open space. They have their own little slice of heaven, I guess you could call it. But then we're relying on a future HOA, which is controlled by the residents to give themselves permission to do whatever they want. Which is fine, except for white fence, tan fence, white fence, tan fence. It's, we're not in love. So we think this is architecturally really pleasing. And it's going to match the fence out on the Parkway. And beyond that, we get a little bit of control of it all at the same. This is one of these pedestrian crossings. So we do recognize this north-south road is longer. So we can flare the street in, give residents a place to cross. We can put signage up, landscape around those crossings and give people the opportunity to cross safely. The whole project is connected by a sidewalk system. On every unit has a sidewalk in front of it or in front of it and behind it through all parts. And there's connections through the buildings, things of that nature. I think it'll flow really well. This gives us control to let people cross in a maybe safer area.
Yeah, yeah.
Go back, go back a little bit, just curious. So these aren't the actual designs of what they're gonna look like, or are they?
Those are, these are very close to the elevations that we saw a few weeks ago. There could be small tweaks.
Couple of tweaks.
Where it's rendered. So for instance, these sides.
For example, is that gonna be different than what we're seeing there?
Any side that's exposed to a public street.
You'll have what you showed us. Awesome. Okay, perfect.
These are considered public streets inside there?
Of course. But some of the units are 10 feet apart. So we've made the argument in the past, we landscape through there. You really can't see up in there to pop out and start bringing them closer together. But that's a great example of that. I appreciate you for pointing it out. Here, yes, we won't have these, a blank wall. There's 170 units.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, yeah, it looks good.
This is a nice tool.
Yeah, it is.
It's helpful.
Like, yeah.
Have a gentleman that's really good at it. It takes a tremendous amount of time. So I flew back for him. He had, he had two all-hiders in a row. Waiting for us. Our civil didn't give him plans until Monday. It's a long story. But yeah, that is an exposed side.
Perfect.
So you know we're gonna expect this kind of a presentation each time, right?
No. So it started rendering at 3:00 in the morning and it got done at 9:40 before DRC.
Okay.
About six and a half hours on a pretty powerful computer. So yes, these, the concept with these buildings is that four-sided architecture or three-sided depending. So the backyards, we have, all of the units are staggered. That gives us jogs in the foundations. That comes back to the Legacy Farms design guidelines that we incorporated roof pitch finishes, driveway amenities, garage door amenities, staggering the buildings. And then this is similar to what we did up in Canyon Breeze. Added architectural details on the sides of the units that are exposed to the public streets. And we appreciate you looking at that in fact, that some of the buildings, when they're 10 feet apart, it doesn't make a ton of sense by the time we get mature growth in there with the landscaping. So but anywhere we have, you know, on Slant Road, when you pull in, that's the unit we'd be looking at. Awesome. Or off the Parkway, the same, same concept. These are those backyard courtyards that we, that I keep bragging about.
Okay.
This is the rear load. So you would see this from the Parkway. And you would see this from inside of the subdivision itself. So it's actually kind of a neat concept. We have two, we have a front and a back, but they both could pose as the front of the unit. And this way for deliveries, we get complaints of post office deliveries, UPS, they need a door that they can go to. So they can access off either side. They don't want to walk around the unit to get to the front door. If I have this in Parkview. This will be better. This is kind of, this is a new attempt for us to solve that issue. This will speed down and go, this is that southeast corner where that dog park has been added. We'll put a trail system that goes back to it and put some amenities back there. It's fully fenced off. There'll be double gates so people can access it. You know, trash receptacles that the HOA can maintain. These are these courtyards we've added that are now new on all of these exterior units.
I like that.
And we didn't think it would fit. And then once we started looking at the space in real time, which is why this is separate, they fit really well. And people will love them. It'll be a nice feature for them. So that's new. This is that dog park we're talking about. We'll have a fenced-off area where people can go down, they can walk down, let their animal off their leash and utilize that space rather than just becoming another, we didn't have a park back there or anything like that. We'll put some play equipment in.
Pretty nice.
Down in Parkview, just watching people with dogs turn everywhere. So it'd be nice. Yeah, these are from the back. And these units are about 14 feet apart. When you come in off the main road through here, you really won't have great visibility down the sides of those units. Again, there, that's not rendered properly. That'll have that public-facing street. And that's part of our submittal. The architectural package is in our packet. And these are the proposed elevations depending on where the unit sits in the project. What we did with Canyon Breeze is when we submitted the building permits, we labeled every unit in the project and said, these go here. And we submitted a plan that had all of that contained. This is the Parkway down here, excuse me.
Your wall that is on the south side of the property next to the commercials on property, is that gonna be masonry wall?
Yes, so those have to be exterior delineating uses. So those, that'll be a six-foot masonry wall. And we may do eight foot. If that's up to, six foot meets the standard. We did eight foot down in Parkview where we broke up from commercial. It just works a lot better. It's 25 more dollars a foot, but it gives us a better break from what they're using.
I didn't notice. What was on the east side with the, the rel?
Same thing, it's a six-foot masonry wall. So all four sides of the entire project, the 22 acres are fenced. It's a pretty...
So is that the commercial to the left there or not quite yet?
So the railroad tracks would be here to the east. And then this to the south is that proposed commercial area where they'll get some type of a shopping center, like a Smith's or something of that nature.
And you've got trees along there too that you've added, you said?
Yes, not with staff's recommendation. And it makes sense. When those, that commercial will come for a while, the tracks will be there for a while as those grow in. And they're, at staff's recommendation, they're two inch trees. So they'll come up pretty quick and give us a canopy. We already, always kind of planned that these units would give us a buffer from that, but and that's maybe not fair to the people living in those units. So this makes sense.
Yeah.
This is that double-sided architecture, which is why I think that works really well. So from the Parkway, we're looking at, you know, so from the inside, we're not looking at the back of a unit. From the Parkway, we're not looking at the back of a unit. They're truly a double-sided. I think either those could pose as the front. If you'll pause it right there, Michael. This is that entrance that we realigned. And the reason we had previously attempted to realign it is to make it more centralized to the project. But your staff had some concerns with that, which were worth noting.
Where was that before? Further south?
Further north, by 200 odd feet. This is the current alignment. The reason we looked to abandon it is we wanted it up here where it was more centralized to the project. And regardless, the sewer lateral missed, whoever, when the improvements were put in, they missed the sewer by about 120 feet. So you've either gotta go tear the Parkway up and move the sewer or leave it where it's at. And we decided to leave it where it was at with staff's recommendation. So we'll make this, there's some benches in there and some seating. We'll make it like a courtyard. We looked at putting a pavilion there, but we don't think it's a good place to be directing the traffic flow because that intersection could be busy. So maybe for these residents here and these ones, it's a little bit of a benefit, but having, you know, open space.
What changed specifically that gave you four more units?
We left this building right here off. It was a mistake.
And the other one?
Yeah, on the legacy design guidelines, the project's approved for 170 units, which is what we're at. It's roughly, it's just over eight units an acre, which this is an R3 zone, which is allowed to eight and 12. I think 12 is the max.
Four units. Yeah, that, that looks good.
Looks really good.
Truly good.
The benefit of this is it helped us just kind of visualize what the project looks like and the amenities that we've, we had. And we added a few based on staff's recommendations. In a nutshell. I think it'll turn out really nice. We're excited for it.
So where are you gonna start? What phase are you gonna start with?
We're gonna do phase one. We've argued this back before, the dozen times. We're starting right here. Down, we want to be our own standalone away from Legacy for just a minute. And I won't lie, all of the improvements are in right here. And none of the improvements are in right here. So we're gonna start on the southwest. I think it'll look nice. It'll give us a chance to start getting the frontage improved, get the landscape again. It'll look really nice.
Yeah.
Get us away from this intersection up here and the tracks and all of them.
Great.
We have phase one ready to submit for final plat. So we're excited. We're just working through all the procedures.
Looks good. Thank you for the presentation.
I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you.
I appreciate the work that they've put in. It's awesome to see them kind of go through and explain and give us details as far as the amenities that they're gonna provide. Now I just wanted to remind you from the last time we looked at this, there were some conditions with the recommendation that you provided to the council for approval. And so for your convenience and ease of making a motion, if you have any, just make the motion as written. Or you can read it what we got here on the screen for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Commissioners, any other questions for developer or staff?
I don't think so. It looks good.
So we approved this, or not approved, but recommended approval. They come up with these changes before it hit city council, so it didn't go to city council yet. So we're back to where we was really a few weeks ago with these changes that we've seen. Does any commissioners want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that, that we recommend that the city council approve. The, the Legacy Farms Town Host, Town Homes preliminary plat has written.
Okay, you got a motion? We have a second.
Second.
Mr. Davis, second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Hey, good shape. Yeah, it looks good. Okay, we're gonna have one change on the agenda from item four, zone change. We're gonna hold that and move to item five, which is a title 15 amendment. This is a public hearing item, so Dave, looks like you're gonna present this one.
Thank you. Trying to equip three changes that are worth noting. We're proposing that we define event centers. It's one change, which is a reception center. But so adding definition for an event center, making an event center a permitted use in the commercial two zone. We're requiring for the parking requirement for events. Those are the three changes in substance of what's proposed tonight. And we appreciate the acknowledgement, initiating the process. She'd like to reconstruct the event center in town. And property options to the zone, commercial two. Right now, it codes a vote that may do us as to whether or not it's allowed in that zone. It's for reasons to the management at the location that she's looking at as well. On other properties, there is a zone, commercial two. And from that perspective, staff always supports this proposed amendment.
So this would be adding the term event center to the C2 zone? That's what we're doing, okay. So we want to hear from the applicant. Is that what you're suggesting?
It's a public hearing.
We're gonna have you introduce yourself.
Okay, I'm Ashley Shepherd.
Hi, Ashley.
So we're proposing to build an event center on the south end of Main Street. Do you want to show them or not necessarily? I don't care. Whatever you want to see.
Heck, yes. Let's, let's look where it's gonna be.
Um, this is the actual location. So it's the south end of Main Street and also has access on South Lane. So I did, I don't know if this is relevant or not, but I did get approval from UDOT to have the access still on Main Street. So what our event center will be is it will mainly host receptions, so for weddings. However, we're like a diehard Spanish work community, like gathering, all of that. So my kind of vision for the event center is not only to hold receptions there, but to be a place of gathering for the community. So I own a catering company. And we want to host events there for the community. Mainly events that would gather families. So we talked about breakfast with Santa Claus, where people can pay for their family to come, have a breakfast, meet Santa. Maybe like an Easter egg, kind of same thing, a brunch. Maybe a Mother's Day or Father's Day the Saturday before. We want to do like a love dinner for Valentine's Day. Just different things that would incorporate the community and gather them. I just think when you have food, people come and they create relationships and strengthen relationships. And I just think that Spanish work city doesn't quite have an event center that does that yet. So that's what we're proposing. This is kind of how it will look. This is kind of our rough draft. So if you see where the reception center sits, the thing I like most is that back area. It provides actually a place where a bride could have an indoor venue or an outdoor venue. So that back space hopefully will be pretty secluded by the building because look how far off it is on Main Street. And there is a lot of mature trees. And we plan to pretty much line, it's the McKell property, I don't know where the address is, but this property to the south of us, line all of that and then South Lane. So that that back area becomes pretty secluded from any road. And depending on what happens with South Lane in the future, hopefully that becomes pretty secluded back there. So we have, we kind of have a general idea of what it's gonna look like. It's, I want it to be more kind of Spanish work spill. So it is kind of a barn style, maybe a little bit more modern. I think you have a picture of it. Maybe, oh, okay. Just so you can kind of see what it would look like from Main Street. I want it to kind of still create the ambiance of the River Bridge. So that you still, you still get that feel when you come that it's out in nature and it just looks like it should fit there. So this is kind of what it'll look like facing Main Street. And then, yeah, you would just walk around that right inside. That's the back area or the back of the building that would enter into the garden area. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's exciting.
Any questions?
You're pretty excited about this.
I'm like so excited, you know?
I'm getting excited.
I'm like so excited. Don't shut down the dream.
Are you gonna make it red?
Is there gonna be a red one?
Am I gonna make it red? No.
No?
I know.
Well, that's Spanish work.
I know it's Spanish work. I have to draw the line somewhere. This is maybe a little bit more appealing.
It's gonna be green, is it?
No, it'll actually more look like this. It's gonna be kind of the grays and white tones with the black windows. And so, I mean, it might change a teeny bit on color, but that's a pretty good idea of what it will look like.
So UDOT did approve your access then?
Yeah, so we had a meeting with UDOT on Tuesday. Based on the advice we got from DRC was that we needed to have a shared access with the property next door that is zoned commercial as well. It's not bought, but it is there. So UDOT did give us approval. I'll have that in writing in the next week, their approval. I just had to submit a few things. But they will allow access right there as long as we do a shared access to that property to the north of us.
What's the capacity of the, of your event center?
So the capacity right now sits at 250. We're still finalizing the actual plans. We started at 6,500. Met with the architect yesterday. It's actually gonna be a little bit bigger, more like 7,200. That will increase our capacity. However, we will not, we will not have that many at one time. So ours will be more flowing regardless of what it is, whether it's a reception or an event that we host for the city. It would be more time-slotted. So we're thinking at one time, we wouldn't have more than 150 people there at a time. And we did do our parking, we calculated this last time. I think our parking was like 50 to 1 or something. We had doodles of parking based on Spanish work city's current ordinance. Did I miss that? Was that right? Okay. So yeah.
So that shared entrance, if somebody came here to the north, they, they would be right there as well. Is that the idea with UDOT?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So yeah, we would have to do a shared access right there, which obviously would change the landscape right there. That obviously wouldn't be there anymore.
What's your timeline on this?
Um, well, we need to start like yesterday. So our timeline, we're hoping, obviously, to start as quickly as possible. We want to start booking weddings for June 1st of next year. We think it's gonna be about an eight-month process to build it. I mean, it's pretty, it's like a rectangle.
Yeah.
So it shouldn't be that, you know, that time extensive on the actual building.
Right.
But yeah, that's kind of our timeline, is to be open June 1st, 2020.
All right. Any questions?
Any concerns, Dave, with the road, possible road going south of that?
Nothing that's out of the ordinary at all. There's a process still that we have to go through relative to all of the site-specific improvements, but that's fairly routine for us. And we haven't talked about anything yet that causes us any more concern with what she wants to do.
We've also talked about the possibility of having that South Lane road
Dead end.
Dead end in the future.
I'm all in favor of that.
Which would, which would make it so.
Which would really make that secluded back there because the traffic, no one would go down there unless they needed to get to those homes. Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and it would, it, we wouldn't have two entrances and exits there. Well, and it would, we wouldn't have two entrances and exits there.
Right.
In close proximity. If the other one is closed, then the next one would be light, so.
Right.
Light. So there's a house there now, right?
Yeah, so there is a house there right now that will have to be.
Yeah, there's a barn there too, right?
Yeah.
Barn's gone?
Yeah, there's like a little, there's like a little horse. What do you call those? Little horse barn stall thing, but it's not very big.
Gee, I think Cece would really like that. What do you think? I think she would.
Who would?
Cece.
Carol.
Carol.
Oh, yeah.
So the actual, the cool, the thing I like most about this property is if you look right here, where it kind of corners where that no parking sign is, that little road right there, I think is owned, is owned by state, correct? Like that weird little road?
That one?
Little asphalt road right here.
Trail entrance?
Yeah, that trip, right? Yeah, so that property literally butts up right to that River Bridge, which would be perfect for any type of picture or anything, if someone wanted to go right there. It butts up right. You just walk right there. That has nothing to do with the project, but I just thought that was cool. We just throw away two sentences. So, yeah, that's what we're proposing.
I like it.
Yeah.
All right.
If the project has as much enthusiasm as you do, I can't see anybody missing with that.
And I'll feed you. Last time I bought treats, but this time I was running down from girls camp, so I was like, oh, I don't have treats. But next time, I said, I'm good for my word. Was there treats?
It was delicious.
So where's girls camp? Where's girls camp?
We're up at, is it Kohol?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're up there. Yeah, anyway, that's our project.
Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
And your excitement. Thanks.
So this is, this is just the Title 15
Yes.
change that we're talking about tonight now.
Dave, is there something in this zone currently that is close to that?
Public assembly is a word that we have. And honestly, at this location down here, I can't imagine that without this, we probably have any issues, so maybe it's maybe a retention, wanting to make sure that everything is as clear as possible.
Yeah.
And to make sure that the parking requirements are clear. I think with these types of uses typically that would be the concern if there is any relative to it, so.
Okay.
As I looked through it, adding event center to the permitted issues or permitted uses, I didn't see anything else. The, doesn't look like any of the parking requirements changed. Is that right?
I think you can say that. Yep. If we're comparing this to a public assembly use or something like that, yep. And I appreciate what we talked through relative to the concept plan. I think that clearly illustrates that they plan to have, or they at least could accommodate the kind of parking that we're proposing to be the requirement or be that required number.
So we're not part of this recommendation is not necessarily to approve parking. It's to approve adding the text to an approved use.
Correct, but also the parking requirement. If you want to take a peek at that.
Is it inside of this C2?
Clearly, yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
Okay.
So adding, excuse me.
Okay.
To the use table with.
Same category as a movie house or health club, et cetera.
That type of thing, yeah. Which is a pretty stringent requirement. I think it's the most stringent that we have.
Okay.
Anything else that we've got in the city right now? Would that end up falling into event center, like clubhouse or anything?
Clubhouse and the Shaloon are the two. And we've had several people over the years ask about this use and where they can do it and that type of thing. And I think that's partly why it makes sense now, from my perspective, to make this change, just so it's clear.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Dave. Okay, so this is, because it's Title 15, it's a public hearing. I'm gonna go ahead and open it to a public hearing at this time if anybody wants to comment. You're not gonna come up this time. You're gonna save yourself, huh? Expectations are high.
Pull up that plat plan if you would. Can I get a pointer?
Yes.
I think my only concern, I love the idea. This will be my only concern is in the future. And y'all might be thinking that this is gonna be an entered from South Lane. Is that what you called it? No, the satellite one. Sorry. So this right here, right now, is not zoned commercial right now. But I think the expectations that it could become a commercial property are good. And so when a heard plat plan, there's, this is the only entrance that's ever gonna be here that could access this property because of the stoplight location. I'd like to consider getting rid of our parking on this end, turning it into a drive that could be someday accessed in here for more commercial space. That's all. Otherwise, this is always gonna be locked in entering down here, which could cause congestion. Otherwise, someone could come into her property and kind of come into that lane there for strip mall or whatever.
Make it more usable for.
That's one that kind of came to my mind. So you made me come up here.
You're a thinker. Dave, does staff have any comments on that or thoughts?
We're really not at the site plan review stage yet. The concept plan that we see is just illustrative of the idea.
So that C2 currently doesn't go any further south than that property we're looking at.
It's not city property south of there, right?
It's a city boundary as well.
Oh, is it? So it turns county?
Yeah.
At that point? So could that concern be brought up or reviewed as part of this plat review or?
As part of the site plan review.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, any other public comment? All right, we are going to close the public hearing portion. And commissioners, this would be making a recommendation to the City Council, correct, Dave? Anyone that would entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we recommend the City Council the changes to Title 15 amendment concerning event centers.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Carry on then with your project. Okay, this is the last, is this the last thing on the agenda?
Back to.
Okay, so we're back to Item 4, zone change. This is actually in two steps, it looks like, but it's also gonna be a public hearing portion, so we'll hear from Dave on this.
And actually, I think it's best maybe to view these as separate items. But each are similar in that these are city-initiated zone changes. We don't often do that, but there are two particular parts of the community where we as staff and we found that the City Council agrees, have zoning that frankly is obsolete, that no longer matches the appropriate land use pattern for the area. It is at least a little bit, if not very inconsistent with the city's general plan. And that's the reason that these two items are on your agenda tonight. The city has initiated the process to change the zoning. And we've talked about some other areas, other properties in this particular part of the community. Leland Mill, for example, looking at that which is currently zoned industrial two and the idea that there's maybe a better zoning mechanism to use for that operation than that particular zone. We've talked about the Fritzy Building. We've talked about IFA and the properties immediately around that. And I mentioned that just with the idea that in subsequent months, we anticipate being back with some other items that'd be similar to these with zoning proposals and to go that route. It's another part of the community that I think we need to evaluate in depth. And I'd say at this point that frankly, we have a little while to get some changes in place. But certainly, north of the Canyon Creek development and where the hospital is being built, in some ways similar to the area around Del Monte and Arrowhead, we need to take a good look at zoning arrangements that exist there and see what maybe really makes sense, given how that part of the community is changing and how it's changed and how we anticipate it to change further. So that's just a little bit of background relative to how these two items ended up on your agenda tonight. This one frankly, for me, is really, really simple. Right now, the American Leadership Academy property, it's three different zoning designations. I'm a little bit familiar with how we ended up with that arrangement. And to make a long story short, we as staff think it makes perfect sense and really the only rational zoning that we think works for this property is to simply have it zoned, public facilities. That's a zone that is intended to allow for a very broad range of different, and just like the name connotates, you know, utility services or different types of governmental uses, schools, parks, and those sorts of things. I think it's a perfect fit for this property and really the, from a concern perspective, not that you necessarily could do much with a property that's immediately adjacent to Del Monte, which is currently zoned industrial two, but the industrial two zone is our biggest concern for this part of the city. We'll talk more about that with the next item. But just relative to the, I think we're calling it the ALA Zone Change, staff does recommend that the change to public facilities be approved.
So the blue area is what we're talking about here?
Exactly, yep.
You're gonna have some I2 outside of that to the north.
And to the south, both, for the time being.
And what is that area now? What's there? Is that the MTEC?
No, MTEC is zoned business park. Which I think we could argue that the business park zone is consistent with the general plan, which the general plan calls for mixed use from Arrowhead Trail all the way up to, and I think including, at least some or all of the American Leadership Academy property. The I2 zone is not consistent with the general plan and that's part of.
Is there a reason you didn't come farther south and take all of that I2?
So we have an application to have the zoning changed on this property here from I2 to R3.
Okay.
That's something that we're reviewing right now. A day ago, I would have thought that you would probably see that in your August meeting. I think it might be September, but sometime in the next couple of months, that'll run its course. And ultimately, the City Council's gonna be able to make a decision on that change, so that's why that's on the shelf.
Okay.
Or I guess it's just going through a different process. Maybe it's to touch on Leland Mills. We don't want to do anything that would maybe encourage a change of use there or anything that would be viewed as an encouragement for them to do something different with that property. That's something of an icon, something of a community asset, something of a tie to a significant part of the community's heritage. So we're handling this, I think, very deliberately, just to try to make sure that we deal with that the right way. And I'd say the same thing for a couple of the properties that are mentioned on Arrowhead Trail, IFA and Fritzy.
Yeah.
For similar reasons.
Dave, does the way a property is zoned affect how taxes are assessed?
Yes, I think so.
So how will this affect, it's already a school. I don't know that they pay property taxes on a school anyways, but because it's not zoned PF, are they having to pay property taxes? How does that work?
It's a public school and we don't collect, there's no tax collected on.
Whether it's zoned residential, industrial, or whatever, because it's currently used as a school, there's no taxes being collected on. So changing this to a PF doesn't affect that in any way?
It really doesn't change anything, to be candid. Public, I'm sorry, yeah, schools. Charter schools, other types of public schools, whatever it might be. They're allowed to go in any zoning district and local municipality zoning has very limited influence on what they can do. So Brandon spoke with a gentleman from ALA and he could maybe talk to that conversation, but in my words, the reaction was kind of, so what? Which is a, it's a very genuine reaction. This for me has more to do with just trying to clean up some inconsistencies that we have and that type of thing.
So all that area is owned by ALA, right?
Everything that's outlined in blue is part of the ALA site. Yeah.
Thanks, Dave. I think I would suggest that we do these separately as public hearings. You guys are okay with that? Okay. So for okay commissioners, I'm gonna go into public hearing at this point, but you've got some questions. Okay, we'll go ahead and go into public hearing. And again, we're just talking about this particular site in blue. If anybody's got anything to comment or ask questions from public or on this? I'm not even gonna look at you this time.
Nothing.
Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing on the ALA. Commissioners, are there any questions? So this is a recommendation to the City Council. Is there anyone that wants to make a motion?
Not sure we get her right. There's a lot of zones in there.
So the proposal, change this is to what zone?
PF.
Public facility.
I'll make the motion that we recommend to the City Council that the ALA property be zoned PF.
Okay, we got a motion from Commissioner Mendon.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Davis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, we'll move on to the second part, which is Arrowhead Trail.
Again, the subject property here, zone industrial two. We as staff have concerns about uses that are allowed in the industrial two zone. In fact, several different uses. And I'll just cut to the chase. I feel very strongly and I think the City Council, inasmuch as they directed staff to initiate this process to potentially change the zoning of this property, feel like the zoning needs to change. And whether it happens in 2019 or 2020, or maybe in some, you know, future, but soon to happen year, I believe the zoning of this property will change. The only real question now in my mind involves what maybe is an appropriate zone to assign to the property. And because of a use that was approved a little over a year ago, timing, I think, matters. So just to speak to that, we went through a number of different hearings on a storage unit project that, again, it was approved in 2018. And I guess before I get into that, let me say as well that this is not, in our view, necessarily about storage units on this property. This is about, you know, again, kind of that global look at what makes sense from a zoning perspective in this part of the city. Our heartburn as staff is with the I2 zone. And we'll continue to work to have that changed here and on other properties. But to go back to, you know, some timing issues and maybe some potential ways that changes might happen. We're here tonight, public hearing process, because that process has been initiated. Right now, the folks that had a storage unit project approved for this property, they're essentially frozen. Because of this pending legislation, they can't make application to have that approval reinstated. And they'll speak to some issues related to that tonight, I suspect. Which basically means, in my view, that the question about whether or not the zoning should change here probably boils down to how that would happen. Whether the zoning gets changed in such a way that the storage units could somehow be revested, reapproved, and move forward, be built, occupied, and so forth. And then have the zoning be changed so that they would be a non-conforming use. Or should we move forward on this process and the City Council change the zoning without giving them an opportunity to reapply? And have that approval reinstated, or you could say to have the project reapproved, then storage units would not be allowed here. The I2 zone here, without doing some other. The I two zone here, without doing some other zoning things, is the only zone in the city that would allow for storage units. Now that being said, maybe to talk about some of the zoning options, like I said before, and maybe Mike, if you could turn the general plan layer on for us.
Did you, did you say storage units could only be built in a I two, not a I one?
I one with the storage unit overlay, I think, is what would be required, so that's another zoning mechanism that would come into play.
Okay.
But it is a permitted use in I two.
It's a conditional use in I two.
But a conditional use?
Yep. Which is a permitted use, essentially, little nuanced kind of condition, I'm sorry, kind of permitted use, but this is the subject property right here. So the corridor there on the, you'd say, south or west side of Del Monte, mixed use, the uses that the general plan describes as being appropriate for that area. Housing, housing at a little bit higher density than what you'd see in a low-density designation like what exists down the hill to the, to the north or further to the west. Different types of commercial uses, professional office uses, retail uses, and those sorts of things, with zones like the commercial two zone, commercial office zone, R three zone, you know, the residential side. We would view all of those different zoning options as being compatible with that general plan designation. So from that perspective, if there's an appetite to change the zoning now, there's so many different directions that potentially somebody could go in, that our thought as staff is that it probably makes the most sense simply to use our holding zone, and kind of that zone that's the precursor to the zone that somebody really wants to use to develop, the rural residential zone. And that's why I believe the recommendation, or the staff report addresses that as the proposal here, to have the zoning changed to rural residential. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But again, that would be with the idea that somebody would, whether they wanted to do an office development here or a residential development, they'd make application for that, go through the process that you're used to there, and the zoning would be assigned at that point in time. So, that being said, we did talk about this at length today in our development review committee meeting, and I sort of regret what I'm gonna describe as staff's recommendation, although I think it's very appropriate. We don't typically like to punt, and I think this is kind of a punt. And maybe before I mention that, we certainly appreciated working with the applicants a year ago, and the time and the effort that you put into working with them on the storage unit project that was approved. And from a land use perspective, which is maybe where I should focus my attention, storage units typically are not an obnoxious neighbor. In particular, if we're talking about a contemporary, modern, storage unit project, one that would be constructed as this was approved to be, they generally don't produce a lot of, a lot of the things that neighbors complain about, whether it's noise, lighting, traffic, or those types of things. So, this is from staff's perspective, not about storage units being an, excuse me, obnoxious thing for the area. Perhaps we could look at storage units as not maybe being the best use for the site. You know, if we did think that the site might be able to house someday, some kind of an office development that might, you know, involve a significant capital investment in the property, that would generate property tax that the city would benefit from, or provide employment for folks, which is generally good for a community. I think that would be an appropriate perspective as well. But we're not concerned about storage units being here. So, with that being said, again, the I two zone is what makes us uneasy. So we recommend that the zoning be changed from I two to pretty much anything else. I do think that the rural residential zone makes the most sense. But, the DRC's recommendation comes with kind of a caveat to that, which is that if the city council wants to have that zoning change occur in such a way, which basically would involve a delay on making the change, so that these applicants apply to have their project reapproved, which would involve having the site plan reapproved and going back through the process to have the conditional use reapproved as well, which involves a public hearing with you, with the planning commission being the land use authority for conditional uses. They could do that, and, you know, without trying to predict exactly how it would work, but potentially then, immediately after that project is reapproved, we could, again, get back into the process of changing the zoning to something else. That development then would be a non-conforming use, it'd be a legal non-conforming use. But, in one way or another, that I two zone would go away. And at that point, you know, I think our concern goes away as well. Does that make sense? It's not typical, but...
Dave? I don't wanna be blunt. I, I don't know why this is even up. It's really bothering me. First, this is a piece of contaminate, it's contaminated, the ground's contaminated. There's concrete and there's asphalt underneath there. We know that, you know, and we've had this zone for that I one. And, and when we brought the, when, when these people came in with their proposal to put the storage units, I mean, they came in and we did some recommendations with it that would fit in with, with the area and make it look good with that area. And we got to the point where the residential people were happy with it and okay with it, and the people that brought it in were happy with it and brought it in with it. And so they let, let it eclipse, elapsed a little bit, but we've had, we've had subdivisions and that has lapsed, and within a year, they've come back in and we haven't had no problems with it. We have okayed it and continued on with it. And I says, "I just think there's something wrong here. Has somebody else come in to you and talked to you and say, 'Hey, listen, we got a better idea with this'?" But we gotta remember one thing, this property is contaminated. It's got stuff in it, and if you bring in residential or something else, if somebody come in, you gotta let them know that they're gonna have to dig it all up and take it all out, and it's gonna cost them millions of dollars to fix it, and there's only certain things that you can put on that piece of property. And I called you up and I asked you, "If you got somebody here that can tell us what they can put on a piece of contaminated property besides storage units?" I mean, I just, we approved this one time, and I thought it was a good deal. And so I'm just a little concerned now that all of a sudden, the city has made the proposal, not somebody else. It's always been somebody else that's coming and says, "Hey, I got an idea. Can we change the zoning?" You know, it's never been the city. It's always been somebody else, and all of a sudden, you guys are coming in and telling us now that we would like that change. I would like to know why that's happening.
Because I think the I two zone is a complete disaster for this whole area. It doesn't make any sense at all in my mind. None.
Is there something else, besides the storage units, or anything else that can be put on contaminated ground?
First of all, we're not talking about contaminated ground, we're talking about zoning.
That's right.
If you wanna make that the focus of your recommendation, Richard, that's entirely up to you.
Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to talk about.
But clearly...
But I want everybody to understand that there's, there was a reason why we went to this, this I one or I two or whatever we were gonna do, is because that ground at one time was run by Valley Asphalt, and that's where they dumped all their stuff, and this ground's not good for anything else but something like this.
We can certainly have different opinions. My opinion is that, without any question, the I two zone does not make sense for this property. Hence, the process that we're going through, and staff's recommendation to change the zoning to something else.
Okay, so again, my question is, what can you put on this property? What zone, what type of zone, what type of buildings can you put on this property that would match that besides a storage unit?
I'm not aware of anything that you can't do with the property.
Without digging it all up and without...
You might have to dig it up. You might have to clean it up. And frankly, I think there's probably some value in looking at cleaning up contamination, if that's what we're gonna hang our hat on, a contaminated site. That's something that needs to be looked at. But from a zoning perspective, the I two zone, in my view, doesn't make sense. So that's, that's the reason. I'm obviously a little bit unnerved, I don't know if you're believing that somehow there's some influence over staff and, and why we are recommending the change.
But I wanna know, what all of a sudden changed it when we were okay with what was going on, and all of a sudden now we're...
Well, yeah...
I think it's the concern that if they don't end up building storage units there, and it stays I two, what would end up there? And would that end up contaminating it even more? Who knows what would end up going there?
And, in all candor, that's not a new concern. That's a concern that we've had for a long time. We talked five years ago, seven, eight years ago, about the idea of going through a process like we're going through now with a city-initiated zone change, and frankly, we got some counsel from some legal minds that that probably wasn't a good idea for the city. And the counsel that we've received has changed. So, the idea of downzoning this property, from a legal perspective, the city has the right to do that.
So, let me ask you something else then, Dave. So, they let this lapse. Was they given a, a letter or something saying, "Hey, this is getting ready to lapse. Did you wanna come back in and make sure you're starting to build, or are you gonna reapply, or what's gonna happen?" Was that ever happened to these people, or was gonna build the storage units?
I don't know with certainty, but I don't believe so.
Richard makes a good point, though, because there's a residential development north of this that they bought the property not understanding or knowing how much cleanup they were gonna have to do. And, you know, obviously, if we were to change this to something else, we would need to make sure whoever the property owners, or if you guys sell it to somebody else, whoever buys that would have to know the amount of work that would be involved to, to develop it.
Question I have is, is if the current landowners want to reapply for the same use that they asked for before, if the zoning request goes through and is rezoned, they would ask, have to ask for a zoning change again?
Right.
And...
Richard, to be clear, they never had to ask for it before.
They didn't ask?
They did not ask for it originally, because it was always I two, they didn't have to do that.
Okay.
The storage unit was a conditional use. They wanted to build the storage units, so they came in, made the application for conditional use for storage units. That's where we were a little over a year ago.
Right.
So there was no zone change, but yes, to answer the question, yes, there would be a zone change if this got changed to an RR, rural residential zone, and yes, they would have to come back with a zone change.
So my question is, is that it has been approved as a conditional use in the I two zone, in the last year and a few months. It's lapsed, but if they were to ask to do this again, if the zone change goes through, they would have to ask for a zone change, a zone change from RR.
Yeah.
To a use, to a use that allows the rental units, the storage units.
Essentially, they have to ask for I one, right?
Right. So I guess my question is, is that we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit with this discussion right now, because we don't know what those owners would like to do now, and what avenue they want to pursue. And it seems like we're, we're jumping through a ton of hoops to rezone, zone again, and who knows what will be applied for until we talk to them. They're the owners, they have an idea of what they wanna do, I would imagine. So I would imagine that we need to listen to them and see what their concerns are. I think we've got other people here that are concerned about the use that has, that's been proposed before and has been, and has been approved. And if we're gonna change it, they probably have some ideas about what they'd like to have it changed to. So, I guess, I'm just saying, we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit here, we need to have that done.
So the, the city denies the zone change and it stays I two, property owners then have a choice. They could come back and put anything that they want that's, that's legal, conforming, whatever, for that zone on that property, is that correct? And at that point, the city doesn't have any say to say, "We don't want that here." As long as it's zoned for, or as long as it can go in an I two, they could propose anything, and at that point, we would have to listen to them. Is that correct?
Uh, they wouldn't be listening to them. It'd be a, it'd be a right that they'd have to use their property in accordance with those zoning provisions. So it's a given, it'd be an administrative decision, that use would be approved, and there wouldn't be debate or question about it, which is, that is staff's concern. And maybe just to clarify, from some things that you said, John, we're not recommending that we change, or rather, that the city council change the zoning to potentially have it changed back for the storage units. Rather, and I'm trying to think of the most clear way to put it, if the city council ultimately wants, and, you know, this is, I think largely what we're looking for a recommendation from the commission on. If you feel like storage units are an appropriate use there, and you like the project or anything about it, and think it's maybe less impactful on the neighborhood than what you'd likely see instead, which would probably be some kind of a residential development, maybe some kind of a combination of residential and commercial, maybe a convenience store, I mean, we could speculate all day long about what might end up there, and we could speculate largely because the mixed-use zone allows for so many different things, or the mixed-use designation allows for so many different things. But again, our recommendation is that the I two zone needs to change. And if the commission and the council feel like it's appropriate to do that in such a way that the storage unit project could be revested before that change happens, I think we can do that. I think we can do that to insulate the neighborhood and the city from the concern that you raised, which is maybe some kind of a switch that ends up creating the disaster that we're really worried about. That, and, that would involve some kind of cooperation with the folks that wanna build the storage units, which I'm very confident we could make happen. So again, in my view, and you might have a totally different perspective, but for me, it's really a question of how the zoning gets changed, and whether it's done in such a way that the storage units can be reapproved. And, Richard, I appreciate your thoughts and concerns, and I do think that the likelihood that you could make another project work there because of the condition of the property, and I'll shut up so the applicants can, or sorry, so that the, the property owners can speak to those types of things, I mean, that's a real issue. And I think that's partly why staff is talking about the idea of, hey, maybe it makes sense to allow the storage unit project to be revested and that use to move forward.
If I heard you right, and I, I can see why the city is trying to protect the community at large about what can go in an I two. And we could throw it up on the screen and see what could go in an I two, but I think it's pretty much anything. Cement plant, batch plant, I mean, I don't know what, what it is, but it's a lot of stuff. So I can see, I can respect the city trying to protect that. With the applicant going through quite a process with this group and the public to come up with a decent project, and if, I guess we're, to shorten up what I wanted to say was, I heard you say that maybe during this process, we could protect the city, that if, if the applicant's storage units was approved again, invested, there could be some dialogue, some negotiation, that that gets changed to maybe RR. They build their project, but that's all it could ever be, it would be, what's the term again? It would be a non-conforming?
Yeah.
So they could go ahead and have their storage units forever, but if they ever moved again, somebody bought it up, it wouldn't be I two anymore, which would protect the city, which we're trying, I think that's the spirit of this whole thing, is so that the storage units don't disappear sometime, 20 years from now, and we're back to an I two problem.
In the middle of even more residential homes.
So if, you know, I don't know exactly what that negotiation or talk, but if that could be done, then that seems like a, a win-win. Because that's really, I'm sure, what the city's trying to drive with this thing right now, is we gotta get rid of that I two.
And again, it's not just this property.
Yes. There's other I twos.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't make sense anymore. I mean, we're 50-plus years down the road from why that was ever called an I two.
Yeah. And why this is on your agenda tonight, maybe ahead of some of those others. This is a vacant site, you know, unlike IFA and Leaven Mills, and we don't have an application for, you know, a project like we do on the one that's just north of MTEC and some of those kinds of things, so...
Okay. Well, I think we've got some good dialogue going here. Why don't we go into public hearing, if you guys are okay with that, Commissioners? Okay. We're gonna go into public hearing. I think there's quite a few here that might wanna talk, so let's just lay a couple of simple ground rules. Just limit it to maybe three minutes per person. Let's try not to repeat things that are brought up, kinda respect each other's time. Other than that... Other than that, public hearing's open. You'd like to come up, introduce yourself, and, uh, we'll talk through this.
Did we have the gal that presented the wedding hall? Say this for a week or two.
That would be a good idea.
That was awesome. That was a good project too, I'm gonna tell you, I think.
What was your name?
My, I'm Brad Kitchen, and I represent the developers and the owners.
Thank you, Brad.
Um, you know, I don't need to rehash the history. We've spent a lot of time, I think, three, maybe four separate meetings with you guys redesigning this. One thing, I think Mr. Anderson's a hundred percent right, though. I think that this needs to go out of the I-2 zone. We have no intention of doing anything but the nice storage project that we developed in conjunction with the city and the neighbors. And we just like an opportunity to simply build our project and whatnot. I think there are some pros to the, to the, to the project. When we, when we went through this initial approval process, one of the things that continued to come up with, from the neighbors was this, this high-density traffic that goes along, especially Del Monte, and, and Arrowhead in the mornings. This is, this is, it's a thoroughfare. My kids went to ALA, and, uh, so I know that firsthand. But I wanna just point out that storage is the lowest density, uh, lowest traffic count of any kind of development that we're aware of. Um, we also bought this property sort of in conjunction with the city's recommendation. We were gonna build on North Main. And we're told that that would never happen, but it, it was okay here that we could do it. We bought the property knowing that it had serious remediation issues. We'd seen some, some studies and, and whatnot, and, uh, still went ahead and did it because we realized the only thing we could put there was storage. We have some experience where we're qualified to build storage on remediation sites. We just finished a beautiful project on the city landfill in Provo. So, we're confident we could do it, and would like the opportunity to do it. We have brought our soil engineers, he's employed by the premier soil engineer of the state, to kind of talk to you guys about what full remediation would mean. It would mean millions of dollars for us. And partial remediation, in their opinion, is not an option. We feel like it'd be a nightmare for commercial, it'd be a nightmare for office, nightmare for residential, that would cost the city down the road. And really, all we wanna do is work a compromise with you that would, we're going forward, that I feel like would go a little something like this. Let us reapply, let us build our storage. You can have whatever zone you want. We don't, we don't need it to be an I-2. In fact, we don't want it to be. Two of our major owners are residents of Spanish Fork, and they have told us time and time again to go slowly, to do this right, to make sure this looks correct for the, for the neighbors and everything like that. And, so, you know, we, we're to the point where we'd like to start really quickly, get it done. But we would, we would support any zone change that you'd want, that Mr. Anderson and the rest of the city would do. They've been really good. They've worked with us every step of the way, and it's been a good thing. But the last thing these guys want is to show up one day and have a buyer buy the site, raise the storage, and put a solid waste transfer station or something like that. So, as long as we build storage there, that's our only intention, is to do that and build the nice project. We would be willing, if there's other recommendations to, when we, when we go forward with our conditional use permit application again, we would be open to any kind of aesthetic changes that the city or the commission would deem necessary if you wanted us to do a different mix of brick or whatever, more landscaping. We're fine with that. We want it to be a really nice project.
Okay. Brad, uh, just to ask, uh, you know, we've got this one-year timeframe that went by.
Yes.
Uh, I guess I'd like to ask you why you didn't act, and then secondly, if it was approved again, and you had that opportunity, is that gonna happen again?
Those are good questions. The reason that it hasn't acted, there was quite a bit of work when, when you guys approved this deal, if you remember. There was quite a bit of work that, that went into this. And we're small, sort of small-time developers. We specialize in storage. And one of the big, one of the big challenges we had was the, was the storm drain. It wasn't allowed to drain in the storm, the regular storm drain there, because it was, you know, it was overwhelmed by this. So, we had to engineer and negotiate with the city to clear to take it to the Spanish Fork crew. And that took a lot of time. It's taken a lot of time. Uh, one of the other things that we've wanted to do is we wanted to make sure that the lighting, uh, plan was, was approved by the city, and that's taken some time. The city employees are very, very busy. I mean, this is a massive boom of growth for the, the city and whatnot, so. But we have made quite a bit of progress. And then to answer your other question, we're ready. We have the, the, we changed banks, and we have the banking situation fixed. We have the equity, you know, we own the project. We're, we're literally ready to go. And we, we kind of got a lump in our throat when we got the notice, because it was like, ugh.
Yeah.
We're, we're at hundreds of thousands of dollars into just design. And our, our concern is, is that we change it to RR, it, it'll render this piece virtually worthless. You know, and from, from, from the perspective of how much money we're really into it. And so, that's kinda where we're at there.
Okay.
Uh, once again, our soil engineer can take any questions you guys want, and I'll just sit down.
Okay. Thanks, Brad.
So, I'm the geotechnical engineer, the big heartbreaker. So, the company I work for, we did a geotechnical study of the property back in 2016. And I'm here to tell you about some of the geotechnical conditions we encountered there, and why it's a good site. Oh, sorry. My name is Jordan. Do you know my last name? Culp.
Yes.
C-U-L-P. We performed a geotechnical study. We dug eight test pits out there. And it's a good site for a storage project, because we encountered up to about 13 and a half feet of non-engineered fill, and possibly deeper. In some areas, we were unable to fully penetrate the fill due to encountering large pieces of concrete and other debris. And as I'm sure most of you are probably aware, non-engineered fills present a major concern to development, um, with the risk of adverse total and differential settlements in the future. Typically, residential and commercial projects, we do not build on an undocumented or non-engineered fill, um, without fully remediating the problem. Whether that be completely removing that material and bringing in engineered, or supporting it on some kind of deep foundation or ground improvement system.
Jordan?
Yeah.
Why would, uh, a storage unit be a good applicant for possible settling and so forth?
So, the reasons are, there are structural and geotechnical, um, things we can design to help reduce the potential risks that are associated with that. So, we can, you know, remove some of the fill and put it on good material, and then design the structures so that it can be flexible, so that it can tolerate differential settlements. And, um, it's a light structure, so it, in theory, can, um, span over that potential for differential movement.
Makes sense, compared to a great big, heavy building, multi-story, or whatever.
Exactly. And then, if you're looking at that, nobody's willing to take that risk typically. Um, it's just a lot of liability, especially in residential and stuff like that. Any cracking or anything goes wrong. Um, so typically, a full remediation would be required for that sort of application. I, to give you an idea of the challenge that's associated with that, I have another very similar project that I'm working on right now. That's a medium-to-high-density residential project. And we went into, put in some deep foundations, and they encountered refusal on the debris. So, um, that solution did not work in that case. And I feel like this is gonna be a similar situation, where all that fill then had to be removed, placed back in loosely, and then go back through with the deep foundations to, to make this one work. And, um, the costs are, are great. So, yeah, those are some of the reasons, some of the geotechnical conditions that exist on the property, and, uh, why it seems storage units are a good application.
Okay.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Jordan.
Yep.
Okay.
Richard, my name's Kyle Dart. I live in the Quell Hollow neighborhood, which is just adjacent to, uh, this property. I appreciate the chance to, to be here and, uh, make a public comment. I, I, uh, recognize the world we live in, that land isn't gonna sit vacant forever. And I appreciate the city and this, uh, this board's efforts to protect and, uh, make sure that the development that goes on is wise development. Um, I, uh, for me, when I look at this project and what's going on, it's for, it's for me, the alternatives. What are the other alternatives? And I share Richard's concern with regards to this specific piece of property, and what, what, what else could be put there. Um, I've known the Higgins since my whole life. I've, so in full candor. Uh, I've talked to them a lot about this. I trust them. I've seen the efforts they've made to make this a good project. Uh, I, in terms of what else could go there on that corner with the contaminated land, I don't see a developer coming in and spending the money to make it, uh, efficient or usable for any other thing other than industrial. And with that in mind, I think the storage unit is the best possible use of this property. Um, it's in terms of traffic, in terms of the vision that they have, and the, the aesthetic nature, the, the aesthetic, um, plans that they've made. Uh, I appreciate that. I, I think in terms of light pollution, they've made great efforts and spent a lot of money coming up with a plan that's going to, um, produce the, the lowest amount of light pollution there. Um, traffic is obviously a, a big concern. If you've ever been on that corner early in the morning, or really at any time of day, traffic could be a big concern. And, and with regards to a, a storage unit, I think traffic is the best possible use of that. Um, and in terms of how you zone the rest of it, my, my thought would be, if you're gonna, you know, I, I appreciate Mr. Anderson's concern that if it just sits industrial forever, there's, who knows what could go in? And so, if you're inclined to, to rezone it, I, I think that that's a wise thing to do. But if you're going to do that, my request and my, my, my desire would be that you allow the storage unit project to go forward. Um, if you do it as, on a, uh, uh, legal non-conforming, you can be sure that it'll be stored for, forever, that, uh, someone can't come in if they chose to sell it, someone couldn't come in, wreck it, and do something different. They'd have to, it'd have to be a storage unit for, for the, for the duration. And I think that protects the city's concerns and protects, you know, the neighboring community's concerns. Uh, I'd certainly rather have a storage unit than some of the other, you know, concrete plant or whatever else could, could go there. So, um, I trust these guys. They've been good members of our community. I think that they have our community's best interest in mind. Um, I think storage unit and the, specifically this storage unit, because I've seen the plans. I've seen the way that they're going to do it, and it looks nice. It's, uh, aesthetically, it, it looks nice. Um, it's, it's, it's well-thought-out, it's well-planned, and, and I think that it'd be certainly the best use of that, that plan. I appreciate the chance to, uh, let you know that.
Thank you, Kyle.
My name is Tyler Cope. As some of you are already aware, I'm a real estate broker in, in town, and I also happen to live in the Quell Hollow subdivision. And so, I'm in close proximity to this project. Um, my principal concern, um, I, I definitely see all concerns, but my principal concern is, is the, the way in which zoning policy tends to, you can kind of see from just observing what's taking place, that you've got the interest of the city, you've got the interest of the, the city as a corporation, the interest of the community, and then the interest of the property owner, all at stake. And I can see all angles and where, where some of those concerns lie, and they all are justified. If I had to pick which one would take priority, um, I would, I would side with property rights. Um, what is in the, the best interest of the property rights of those who own the property, and also those who, who live near, live near or have property in close proximity, such as myself. Um, knowing what issues there are with this parcel, and, um, what, uh, storage unit presents, storage facility, I'm perfectly fine with that. I have no trouble with a, a, a storage facility. If we were to see another industrial use, then absolutely, there would definitely be some concerns. And so, I can see the wisdom in the, in staff applying for a zone change here. Um, and, and I appreciate that. It's nice to know that, that, that those concerns are present and, and in the interest of the city and the community. Um, but at the same time, as far as property rights go, this does not appear to be a situation, at least from what I, what I'm observing, where, um, it may not just be warranted at this time to go forward with this zone change, where they're so close to getting this project off and, off and running. I witnessed several real estate transactions where zoning policy becomes one of the biggest hurdles you have to cross. And the way zoning policy is, is administered, um, it's often done from a perspective of caution on the side of the city and the community. Uh, caution because you just don't want the wrong thing in your backyard. And, but at the same time, when an applicant has come in and spent considerable, you know, time and effort and money in preparing a project, it would be very unfair to, to pull the carrot and say, well, sorry, you know, you're gonna have to do this from a different approach, or take another couple of months to get zoning, you know, straightened out later. So, if, if I were to put in my vote, I would say it'd be nice to give them a chance to reapply. Then, of course, and I would be in, you know, full agreement with this, definitely rezone it so that we're talking a non-conforming use in the future. That would definitely be to the benefit of everybody. So, anyway, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Thank you for your viewpoint on that perspective. Anyone else that would? Like to take some time? Okay. That was good. We heard from a couple of property owners nearby, uh, the applicant. Uh, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing, and...
I've got a question.
Yes.
Maybe, Richard, you can help answer this. So, we're talking about, we obviously know that some of this land has contaminants, or is gonna be a lot of cleanup or whatever. Are we only talking about this property, or how large was the cement?
It went all the way across there. Valley Asphalt owned all the way, probably.
All the way up?
No, no, no. Just about right. About where the area, where that, right about in that area.
Okay, so when this property comes up, can we?
Maybe just, I mentioned that we're looking at the development up here. That was owned by Valley Asphalt.
But their dumping area was right there.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was their dumping area.
So, this issue could come up again possibly if this land owner decides.
Yeah, and you would have to do your geotech studies and everything up on that. But we do know, and in fact, I'm pretty sure that area up there where you just circled has it in there, because it was covered up, and there was a lot of concrete and, and filled in right there too. A lot of dirt was filled in, so it, it takes a lot of that. You know, I understand what the city's trying to do here, to protect it from bringing anything else like a concrete company or anything else like that, that would affect that area. My concern that I wanted to bring in is this was already approved. You know, we, we have, we looked at it at another area up north. You know, we, we looked at another storage unit up north, where it was in a subdivision. They had made it look really nice, put some nice walls, put some landscaping in it. So, it really looked good with that area, and we approved that. And we had a little public clamor, you know, at that time. And I think we assured the, the, the property owners around there how nice this unit was gonna look. My concern is, is why did you let it expire? Why didn't you get, why didn't you, when you seen that it was getting ready to expire, why didn't you come back to the city and make sure it got done again? So, we didn't have this problem, and so we're sitting here again, doing this again. That's my concern about it. You know, my other concern is, is usually the city will not come in for a zone change. It's you. It's the public. And so, here we are with the city trying to change it to protect it, and that's what bothers us to me right now. And that's why I'm so upset about it. I, I think, this is great. I, honestly, I think it's the best thing for this area. This is the best thing for it. We had it, you had the look, you had the landscaping, you had the walls, you had everything that we all, every one of us looked at, and we all approved and thought it was a great asset to that area. And now it's gone away, and so now here the city's coming in and going, gee, we gotta do something about this, or we're gonna have a concrete company come in here, and there's nothing we can do about it. And I, I can see Dave Anderson's point, and I can see... And I can see Dave Anderson's point, I can see Kevin and Brad's point on it. But the bottom line is, is I'd hate to go in here and change the zoning if you're willing to go in here and get it done.
So, Richard, what are your thoughts on, and Dave, correct me if my wording is wrong, and we can't do this, but what are your thoughts on if we recommended to the city council that they change the zoning to RR with the condition that they allow the landowners to come back in with their storage unit proposal?
You're gonna have to ask that guy, Jason, because I don't know that.
Legal non-conforming. Is that, is that possible for us?
You'll have to ask him, because I don't know that answer.
I think, I think the question that goes along with that is, could they reapply and ask to delay the zoning change until they have their permits?
That would be, that would be the
That's would be the best thing.
It sounds like everybody's kinda on the same page here, that we go forward with getting this thing built.
We spend enough time in meetings.
How do we make everybody happy?
Yes, the city council can delay it, and I mean, if you guys make that recommendation, they can delay it, table it, however they wanna do it, deny it for now, and let them reapply. They're gonna have to go through the whole process, including the conditional use hearing. No big deal. I mean, you guys have been through, most of you guys have been through a conditional use hearing. You understand the principles with it. There was some public clamor back then, as Richard points out. But as you've noticed, now that clamor's changed. And it's because that use has been, they made it so it's been junked.
They were happy with it. They were happy.
Yeah, I mean, you have the option to do a couple of different things. You can recommend zone change to RR now. You can recommend to the city council that they delay or deny the zone change and allow them a chance to come back in.
Could we add some to that second thought? If we, if we held up for a bit, could there be some verbiage that that would be the only applicant that could be considered? So that, because, because right now it's I-2, until they get approved, it's I-2.
Right. But if, there we go, essentially, if city council, what is it, in two weeks? If city council in two weeks agrees, I assume they could get their stuff in. Once they get their paperwork in, they are vested as far as the paperwork goes. So they're first in, they're first to be able to do anything.
For, for that project.
So if city council agrees to what, hold off on the zone change? So if they deny it or table it, and they come, they come forward with their
Or just put a condition that we will hold off the zoning until they've completed the process.
I like that better than denying it.
To delay.
Commission that we delay it?
You know, I'm trying to come up with a better way to say it, and here's what I'm struggling with a little bit. And I don't know if there are other folks here tonight that wanna speak to the item. Do we close the public hearing?
Which closed.
Okay, thanks. But we don't like causing people stress, applicants or neighbors or anything like that. So with Jason's help, I'd like to just maybe talk through how we do which, how we do what I think I'm hearing consensus on, which is somehow make sure that the zone change happens. And there are some just legal things that we have to do in order to have, you know, as in this case, the city initiated the change, or the applicant. So to make the zoning change in such a way that it's done right, but to do that also in such a way that this project can be reapproved. Jason described, I think, what several of our options are. I also wonder about with the city being the applicant, the city withdrawing. The proposal, I think maybe conferring with some city council people before the next meeting. And we don't often like to do that outside of a public meeting. But just again, in the interest of causing less stress, I think there's maybe value in that. And certainly, I think some conversations sooner than later with the applicants about timing and the need to have a complete application ready to go and just some fundamentals like that. I really don't think, and I'm not hearing this, I don't think this change is something that we want to delay any more than we need to. So timing and having some things line up the right way, I think probably makes sense for everybody. And that's probably just a matter of a little bit of coordination. So I guess back to just the idea that recommending maybe that the zoning change, but have that change happen in such a way that this project could be reapproved. That's the best way I could describe what I think I'm hearing you say.
How much of the property does this storage unit take?
All of it.
Take it all?
Yeah, it does.
Then why change the zone right now?
Just delay it.
Just delay it.
Until it's done.
Yeah, he didn't. Well, no, I'm hearing Dave saying.
Here's why, here's why. With this in process, it, the application has a right to go through the whole process. And until it's withdrawn, approved, or denied, because it's pending legislation, these folks can't make application to reapply. So that's why I don't think
Can you write that up somehow?
No, that's how it is. So that's what I'm saying, is that you have a couple of options. But in order for them to go forward, you're going to have
City needs to deny their proposal or something needs to happen.
We need to cut anyone in.
So if it's withdrawn, is that
It needs to be denied.
Denied.
Denied or, yeah, I mean, you could
Deny it with
Deny it, bring it back in.
Of course, city council can do whatever they want.
But if we recommend that it be denied, with the idea that the applicants are moving forward to get the project done, with this zone change to be brought up again, and I understand that it's gonna have to go through the process again, but we've done that before, too.
And we're gonna do it.
On this project.
Right, we'll be doing it. Part of why I feel comfortable with that is, honestly, we will be back in August and maybe September.
Well, yeah.
Same area, talk about some of the same issues, just different properties, so that's not gonna be hard to do.
I don't think, I don't, I think where you're going with this, yeah, you could deny with the reason behind that is that the applicant is going to go through their process of reapproval.
Right.
And once they've completed that, then
And you know, with the discussion that's here now, I think the applicant is fully aware that if they don't make a sufficient action, if they don't proceed with significant action, you're gonna change the zoning anyway. We're gonna change the zoning. And I hear everybody saying that's okay, the applicant, the neighbors, the city. We all seem in agreement that we change the zoning, it's the timing of it. So the best, you know, it seems to me like we deny it, come back, revisit it as soon as possible, and revisit it as soon as possible.
Can we put a timeline on that, or how long does it take to reapply for these? How long does it take usually, Dave?
With, so the, the
To get there.
Application would be initiated either by the property owners to have the zoning changed or by the city council in a public meeting. So, and yeah, I'm kind of trying to think about the mechanics of how this could work. What I think would work best would be if the city council somehow instructs staff to terminate the application that is withdrawn on July 8th. These applicants make application later in the day on the 8th or on the 9th. And then the council meeting on the 9th, they reinitiate the process. And frankly, that's a little paranoid, right? I mean, that's trying to be, to open that window as little as possible to allow for reapplication, close it back up. That's probably not necessary. But if we're really trying to be careful, that's the best way to allow for these folks to get an application back in and make sure that we don't get somebody else applying for something different.
So at the time they submit an application?
Making it too hard.
Reapproval of your conditional use. No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't contract, but what I heard before was you guys are ready to go.
And is this in?
Once they submit the application, so once this one's cleared, one way or another, it's cleared out, and they get, they can operate at that point, then they can make, they can submit their application. That will get the process started. That freezes anybody else from coming in and doing anything with that.
So when they
It's all on them at that point.
When they submit their application, are they also, are they, property owners also requesting for the zone change at that time? When they submit it, or how does that work? How does the zone change still come into this if we deny it or postpone it and then they resubmit? It's still not zone changed at that point?
No, it would be, they'd be applying for conditional use for them.
With the zone change?
Yeah, so the order of events.
Not with the zone change, because they're not asking for such.
Yeah, so I, I think it's probably best if these folks aren't involved in the zone change. It could happen, certainly. I think it makes things a little bit messy if they have an application in process for a use that's allowed in the existing zone while they're applying for a zone change. The order of events, and just, maybe it's a good, a good thing to talk about sometime just in terms of vested rights from kind of a training perspective. But when an entity makes a complete application, so that means everything's provided that's required for staff to complete its review and for the city to act on a particular proposal, when that application's made, they're vested and they're allowed to have that application considered under the rules that are in place at that time. In this case, that'd be the existing zone that we're trying to be talking about. Now, once that application's made, again, they're guaranteed to have that considered under those provisions. Which is why they make application on the 8th, and conceivably the city council, per our ordinance, could initiate the process to change the zoning. But they'd be able to go through that process and have that application approved. In this case, it's an administrative decision with it being a conditional use in the I-2 zone. But whether it's, you know, the day of, the day after, a month after, whatever, that's irrelevant to the sequence.
At that point, storage units are, the project that's been recommended and approved, they can't, at that point, then come back to the city and say, well, never mind, we actually want something else, right?
That's kinda why, yeah.
They really could. Once they submit that application, that's what it's for. Now, could they come in, if we left it, if we recommend denial, council denies it, and they come in and ask for a back plan at that point, then we're stuck.
And I'm not suggesting you guys would. I'm just trying to understand how the process, yeah. I'm just trying to understand how the process works, not that you guys are gonna do that. Yeah, and I'm not concerned about it. I'm just trying to understand the process, how it plays out, so.
So it's kinda up to you.
I'm kinda hearing all of us on the same page here of
Kinda beating this debt.
Well, well, but what I'm gonna suggest is that whoever makes a recommendation here, that we are, if we're gonna be recommending that it's denied, that we make a statement to the city council that we're not against the zone change. We're denying it so that this next step can take place. Now, the council will be reading our minutes and notes like that. But I think it's a good reason to say, we're not against the zone change. We're denying the zone change because of this timeframe. So I'm not gonna make that recommendation, but I'd suggest that maybe you verbalize it that way.
Again, do we put a time type of deal on this, or, so, I mean, that's my other concern.
So I just wanted to answer the question you had and appreciate the panel asking you the timeline. We were negotiating that lineup till this February. And I just assumed that that's part of that process, and that's all worked out, kind of out, now we're on the clock. And so I do think it would be a great practice if the city did send a notice to conditional use, permit use, or, hey, you know, you've got 60 days left in this, you know, permit or this timeline. I just think it makes sense, especially where this project continued as we were just in effect, we're finishing the conversation on the actual water line going down to the river. And so that's, that's why I wanted to answer your question, so you understand kind of where the confusion has been.
I'd like to know that.
Good point.
Okay.
I don't think, to answer your question, I don't think we need a timeline. It sounds like they're ready to go.
I think so. I think we just
So if I just made a motion that we denied this zone change with the application going through with its development? Is that good enough? How's that? That's pretty simple, pretty easy, to the city council.
Second.
Okay, go to first and the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Dave, I'm just gonna ask that you, as staff, send the spirit of this conversation with the council as you present it, so that, I know Stacy, she doesn't read the minutes much, so you might wanna bring her up to speed. Oh, I just said that in public, I'm sorry. Stacy. Okay, I think that was the last item on the agenda. There was a work session listed. Would we, is that still the case, or would we?
I'd love to take a little bit of your time, yeah. Not a lot, I promise.
Would we keep the minutes open then?
You could adjourn to the work session. It still's a public meeting, but you certainly could do that, or not.
Thanks, you guys.
Yeah.
Yeah, do you want to?
After we adjourn?
No.
Oh, okay, got it. Well
We could adjourn and then address whatever you'd like. Okay.
Does it matter if we just continue?
Well, if we adjourn, then we
We're not on.
We're not on the minutes. And we can do that and go to work session, correct?
Absolutely, yeah. We'll still record it and take minutes, but
Okay.
It's a different environment.
Okay. We vote on that, adjourn, or do we just make a motion?
Either way, yeah.
Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Aye, make a motion that we adjourn.
Right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.